Right.
Good.
Ready? Okay, so I'll call the time of Grotton Planning and zoning commission meeting for order. First item. Have this will call. How's on?
Here.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Evan.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Recording in progress.
First item is a public hearing. Special permanent three seven eight. How would you read the notice?
Notice is hereby given that the following public hearing will be held on December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at seven P M. The community room two town hall annex one three four Grotton One Point Road. And virtually via the Zoom platform to hear the following. Special permit number seven eight ninety-nine Gold Star Highway. In one six eight nine one six seven four eight eight six three C R zone proposal is to convert the existing building from hotel motel. Used to a multi-unit residential use if you as per the per zoning regulation section five point one dash eight point each. Multi-unit dwellings conversion point four dash six special permit area. Good Homes Company. Applicant A A G N A Hospitality LLC owner. Is zoom like you can link with and post into the town's website meeting calendar or can be attended by visiting W W dot soon dot U S webinar I D eight three four four eight six nine three nine five three password three two eight four zero five or my phone. One three zero one seven one five eight hundred ninety. Applications are in prime available for public inspection in normal business hours to the planning department one three four Grotton One Point Road. Grotton Connecticut dated the second day December twenty twenty-two at Grotton, Connecticut.
Just briefly, I'll go through the process. Public hearing. First will. First step is to have the applicant make a presentation. Then have staff. Comment on anything they want to on the application and then open it up. Or any comments they have. All in that will open it up to the commission. And cycle back through everybody until all the questions or issues are addressed. Before we pause the hearing because after the hearing cannot receive any additional information. So yeah. Like to step up to the podium. It carries here. Oh, you're making it by soon.
Part of it.
Evening. Good evening, commission members. My name is Carrie Olson. I represent Good Homes Company. With me tonight and in your presence is my colleague Joseph Shereco. I apologize that I'm not there in person, but I apparently have some type of an upper respiratory thing and thought that I ought to keep it to myself. So I appreciate the opportunity to do this in a hybrid fashion. Also with me tonight is Leila Feldman from Good Homes. Greg Fettis, who is our engineer, Charles Zwyback, who is our architect. And we propose to basically go in order and have them make a brief presentation to you in support of this application. And so with and then I will bring up the rear with a brief conclusory statement. And so with that, I will turn the podium over to Leila.
I've got some printouts just so that you guys want to follow along. Thank you, guys, for listening to us tonight. My name's Leila Feldman, and I'm here to represent Good Homes. I'm one of the principals. So I'm here to really just introduce myself in person, introduce Good Homes and tell you a little bit about what it is that we do and what our mission is. So we are focused on acquiring hospitality assets and assisted living facilities and converting them to market rate attainable housing. And we are trying to build vibrant communities. We're taking hotels with all amenity sets and these beautiful structures and converting them into beautiful apartment complexes that we offer at rents that are at a discount to what's available in the market today. So the project partner was brought in and thank you guys so much for allowing us to come to speak. So this is a bit of a summary of what our mission is. So Good Homes is really focused on, you know, we're creating housing, but we were kind of setting out to create our mission. You were looking at the segment of the population that's between that's making between sixty to one hundred and twenty percent of the average median income in the area. We believe that this is the segment of the population that is one of the most underserved parts of the population. They are making too much to qualify for public housing. But are often being priced out of markets that they're working in across the U S. And this also makes up about forty percent of the population in the U S. So we saw that this was the greatest need. And from a social perspective, this was really where we wanted to focus our attention. We set out on this mission about two, three years ago and creating Good Homes. So from a social component, that's really our focus. And then kind of just wanted to touch on the environmental component as well. You know, in in looking at creating housing for this sort of to fill this housing deficit. You know, one could create ground up developments and apartment complexes, but those are often offered at extremely high rents that aren't attainable to the populations that they're serving. And it also creates a significant amount of environmental waste. So building ground up, as many of you guys know, requires a lot of demolition and buildup of materials that, you know, to create a negative environmental impact. So by reusing hotels and structures that are already in place, we're actually creating fifty percent less waste in doing so. So we're very excited to be able to offer this housing to people, but also do it in a sustainable way without impacting the community's negative. If you go to the next slide. These are just the list of some of the features. We can go into this in one of the later slides. There's some of the things that you would typically find in a Good Homes community. All of our communities have pools, fitness centers. And we repurpose a lot of the common areas, which we'll provide photos later in here into tenant storage, tenant lounges, co-working spaces. We really maximize every square inch of these properties to create amenities that we think our tenants will provide value for them. So we customize that for the market that we're in. But that's pretty typical in the Good Homes community. If you go to the next slide, you'll see some of the typical layouts that you'll find in one of our communities. That's our typical studio layout. They all have full kitchens. You know, beautiful finishes. You know, appliances that are brand new and bathrooms that have been redone. If you go to the next slide, you can see some of the interior renderings that we put together. Really just to show that we're trying to create a standardized product and one that feels like a luxury class A product. So, you know, we have custom cabinetry and appliances and flooring to really make these buildings look and feel luxurious as they are. But we're offering this product at a steep discount for what's currently in market. If you go to the next slide. These are just some of the residential offerings that I was talking about earlier, you know, repurposing some common areas. Creating tenant storage and all of our properties have sufficient parking to meet the demand of our tenants. On the next slide, you'll see so our property management company, once Good Homes is done with construction and development, we partnered with a third party manager called Pegasus Residential. So they're currently managing almost fifty thousand units across the U S. And they have a presence in most of the markets that Good Homes is in. On the next slide is sort of a map of where they are. They have a presence in all states across the U S. Very friendly, very enthusiastic company that we're excited to work with, and they have tons of experience working with products like the Good Homes product and with our target tenant base. The next slide is just an overview of our current portfolio. So we're a national community. We have properties, you know, in the Northeast, Southeast and Midwest. We have about fifteen properties in our portfolio right now, and we're really looking to grow. And, you know, very excited to have this as one of our flagship properties. We're very proud of of this property and we're excited to be here. And kind of have this to show, you know, as a as a example for future Good Homes tenants. And just lastly, you know, in terms of our experience, the Good Homes principals, you know, we're responsible for developing and financing over ten billion dollars in development across residential hospitality, industrial and retail. So we have experience, you know, developing ground up. We've done a bunch of conversions that are similar to this hotel to multi-family in, you know, Las Vegas, New York. So we're very confident in our ability to execute on this. And again, just wanted to be here to introduce myself, introduce Good Homes, take any questions if there are any at the end of our presentation. And thank you, guys, again, for giving us the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Leila. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if you have any questions of Leila at this point, or if you'd like us to move on with our engineer to present the site plan.
Oh, we'll hold off on any questions till after the presentations completed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we'll just move forward with Greg Fettis.
Good evening. My name is Greg Fettis with Fettis Engineering, an office at seventy Essex Street Mystic, Connecticut, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut. Representing Good Homes. As their civil engineer and before you.
You ready?
Yeah, whenever I think there's a supply sheet site plan in front of you, which will end up on the screen also. And I'll try not to lean over it too much. So it's it's. So there's one hundred and twelve existing units between five buildings. The large building, building E. And I'm going to go over the rest of it. There's a little bit bigger one than the cover sheet. So let's not focus on this too much. But one hundred and twelve thing we can bring those into one hundred and fifteen units. Sixty six oh twenty-nine, one bedroom, bedroom units. And then there's some associated. We're converting.
Mr. Chairman, again through you. I'm having difficulty with Mr. Fettis's presentation. There seems to be a lot of breakup. If you can hear him okay, then that's on me because I'm not there in front of you, but I've just I just want to be sure.
Speak a little clearer.
I'm sorry, can someone speak? Just to test it, just to test it.
Because my microphone here.
Do I have to hit something here?
I'll test that again if you can hear me.
I can hear you. There was some reverberation, but it was definitely better.
Around so that he can say.
I can hear you. You hear me.
Yeah.
Maybe it would it would help. I'm gonna mute myself and maybe anybody else who is on my team that's not speaking, if they mute themselves. Maybe that will help. And I am sorry for the interruption. So please, please.
Okay, is this better?
That is great.
Better, Gary.
That is way better. Thank you. I will.
Again, this is the exist. Is utilize the Altus Way that was prepared for Good Homes to prepare this plan. So it's basically what's out there. Our highway, the route ran for Route twelve. And then King's Highway. Responded by next to them on the east side is the days, the old days, and I guess it's been converted or in the process. And then the next property of these five guys. And then King's Highway. It's with Gold Star. So come back to any sheets when there's questions. So this is. At all. Thirty-seven part spaces. Looking in here. Area, almost like a like a like a recreation area. As in the for the residents. You look there. This line here. Is not. So we took out approximately square feet of impervious pavement in that area and turned it in. Impervious grass, grass field, basically. Pavement out of the and it lowers our parking. We are a little bit overparked. The original Grotton Motor Inn and Suites had a restaurant as well, banquet hall. Those are being removed. The car is getting removed. The restaurant is being removed and the halls being removed. Is the the important water resource protection district. And it also reduces the parking where we're overparked. We basketball court again takes up forty-two places. So that'll be another out. Residents. And then you can see the kind of of some gaping week, basically they figured out what the chance are actually there or not there. Put everything on the plan existing there and then twelve trees we so those would get that will get to finish off the screen. To the rental southeast. It's pretty well screened now. You can see the shade in here. Some screening here that's in the right away. So we have pretty well portion across residential area. Through the site so you can get from the main. We did it by cutting out the pavement and putting in be a visual distraction for cars driving. And there'll be a little so that's coming from the building across to the rest of the to the basketball court through the basketball court to the grass. You have players and I'll get to a detail that going around the basketball court can protect you know, from cut and forth. The handicap spaces, there's nine proposed. We are posing to re-strike the handicap spaces because they're striking the standards. So we're re-striping those and the other spaces. Just in build or the larger building. That's mostly where the there are a few down by. Do have just and it breaks out each of the areas with over forty-six thousand plus square feet of we have the bicycle parking. We did put bike racks throughout the property. We got to an odd number. It's two bikes per parking table is through how we came up with the calculations. Requirements again. No change, majority of it. The only real change is the reduction. That you see on all your site plans. Sheet three is the grading plan and drainage plan. We're not really changing any, but we did provide a little bit of grading in that grass area here that kind of very gently direct to an existing catch basin. That's located in the southeast corner. Just south of that catch basin is another catch basin. That's the last basin on our property. Air stormwater for basically half the site. Goes to a detention base over on the Days Inn property. We do have the easements that were in place to kind of get us over there. So what we did was we re-proposed we placed an input in a hydrogenic separator in order to treat the water before it leaves our property. And that's get it just. So currently it's intention based and untreated as part of this application will be removing basins and the piping system. And then a professional engineer, maybe myself, will come out and inspect everything and make sure it's in in good working with basins have the sumps to capture sediment. And that everything is in, you know, pipes are not collapsed or cracked or anything like that. Basically, probably close to the southernmost part of the property. That's this come this area down here in the storm, the stormwater. I think they're all shown on this plan. That is, he's at a like a plunge pool located on the bank before. So we were proposing any change. Clean and clean the catch basins and the piping. Easement that was located. Going. Say nineteen eighty-nine or so. And that was general dynamic. And they won. Current owner for the last twelve years doesn't know anything about. So it's a it's on the typing to to leaves it's there, but we don't have a piece of paper from because I'm not there for a while. Hear about the catch basin. Sheet five details. So we have dumpster enclosure. It's one thing I forgot to mention. We are existing dumps. I think there's only one dumpster enclosure that's the on the ground. So we are replacing the two and I'm the dumpster. Enclosures and they're spread around the site. Talk about access for all the rest. When I flip back to the site plan. Lighting, I'll talk about. Those old styles. Point up into the air. We're be replacing those. Little bit. On those. Just the tree planting tail. And one of the other sidewalks we're installing, but there's a random sidewalk, concrete sidewalk. The detail for cutting a little bit thicker concrete with some reinforced handicap parking sign. Details. And then the man for the park. And there's there like two. If anyone's been over to Tocaria. Tocario on the the old M bar they used. You might work really well. Are good barrier. They're 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 like get them at tractor supply hasn't there, but they're right, different things you can do with. Basketball court with gaps so people can walk in between and so forth. Well, proposed from the main sidewalk. We're proposing we're we're going to put that in. And again, the lighting. Where we will be replacing just going to go over all these items on the multi-unit conversion. Of conditions utilities were covered by we have to wear in public water. Condition number two allows. Condition number two allows. And so forth to go into setbacks if necessary. We're not adding anything, uh, there's two. Have some washer dryer set for every ten dwelling units. Up the trash enclosures. So there's a. Think this one of these is the only one that. A building in for building C and then building B is kind of small, so they'll kind of share. We're putting a larger one in the back area here, another one located on the outside. Building E can use and buildings, uh, there's exits for the rooms and. So the. Going around their sidewalks all around the building. This dumpster on this side, they'll come out. And then. Common space which shows. There'll be access. What all those are gonna be rebuild new. Number dwelling unit. Changing it from existing. Uh, so I don't think. And we're not doing any additions for that. Parking circulation, I think, uh, pretty clear on there, uh, existing island, landscape islands throughout. Refreshed and handicap. And then again, the, the walkways to kind of. The main building E over. So we're not doing a partial conversion, that's number seven, and then recreation community. Uh, so we're, I think we were able to provide quite a bit of recreation area. Specifically about the stuff into building. Then maybe the only thing I left out was walk over on. King's Highway, uh. So we are currently working with. To figure that they did do some, uh. Were kind of fingers crossed that we can efficiently and. Reasonable. Actually finally. Installed. Gonna take some time to figure out, but we're, uh, we're committed, uh, to get people. From this complex. Cross to the, uh, to the Walmart. And let's. I think I covered everything, but. Bring something, but, um. To Charles at this point. Uh, I have his plans, so.
Okay, so. Would you like me to share the screen and I'll walk through a little bit of the plans?
Thank you.
Okay, it's ready to share now, let's see. Okay, so. There you, this is our cover page, you all see that? By reiterating, I, I'm not about the site plan, I'm about the building, so. There's five existing buildings here and what we're gonna be doing is renovating the inside. Uh, all the windows and doors remain, the facades remain as existing, the, the buildings will be painted and. Upgraded and interior finishes will be totally, pretty much redone in all the rooms. So. As, as, uh, I think probably what you're most interested in is the building E. Which used to have a restaurant and all that kind of facility which were changing into amenity spaces, so. I can walk you through that. This whole large area in the back here is, is relegated. Delegated for a, a, a very large gym, uh, the mailroom that would come right off the lobby here. With the leasing office. And as they go down the hallway. They're just, there, there's a coworker and tenant lounge over here, there's. Pretty much mirror tenant lounge and worker lounge in the back here. And on this left side, uh, we propose to put all the storage lockers. Which some are double height cages and some will be, uh, like enclosed rooms. Uh, there's a bike storage area here. Which is plenty large, which can always be made larger, there's a new laundry room in this area. Then we have, uh, there's gardening storage on this side. And on this side, uh, worker storage. Then we'll be revamping the public toilets here for this whole entire area of men's and women's toilets. So when they come into the main, whoops, sorry, they come into the main building here. This whole thing is pretty much a recreational area for tenants and workers. As well as this side of the building is storage and laundry and bicycles. All the rooms here are existing configurations, the only thing we're doing is adding kitchenettes. And redoing the finishes of the rooms. Some of the lighting and drop ceilings. Some spots here and there. And as we go to the other buildings. The other buildings have existing kitchen, which will be upgraded, I can show you here this one. Like this here, th- these kitchens are existing in this building, this is building, uh. Building C, so this is pretty much laid out like an apartment building, I, I would assume that when they built these buildings, they were. Thinking long term of, of having it as long stay residential, so they lend themselves very much. For apartments as we're proposing. So I'll go through another, the same thing here, it's another level of the same building. There's one very small building, which I think is building, uh, which one is that one? This is a very, a small existing building and all we're doing is revamping the kitchens and the finishes in there. Same thing with this other linear building, which was A and C. Uh, sorry, my internet seems to be a bit slow here. So this is the, the ground floor of the very long building, again, you see, you can see here. These are existing layouts of apartments, so we don't have to change any walls, they all meet the codes. The kitchens wherever needed gets upgraded, we'll be doing the figure count of ADA bathrooms, type A's and type Bs. Uh, let me see if I can get to another building. So I think I went through all the different building types. So here's these elevations, this is building B, which is, I, I believe the oldest building may have been the first one on the site. It's a, just a very rectangular building, uh. That all the windows are operable, the siding's in good condition, so the only renovation is on the inside. And this is the inside of that which you've seen before earlier. Uh, here's another, this, this small building, building D, which on the outside looks like a little private home. I can show you on the site plan where it is. Well, first. Yeah, bear with me here, so. That's this building D, which looks like an old private home that was renovated years ago, but that's not really. Our concern, we've looked at the inside, we've surveyed the buildings and determined that their. Their use and layout is perfect for apartments, this is how it looks today. Get back there, yeah. So you see it's, there's studios here. Again, we just upgraded kitchens, the bathrooms are existing. Uh, these are one bedroom here, one bedroom here, this tiny one is a studio. Again, these are like existing units and. They'll be calculated in, in the, all the codes to meet the codes for residential. So again, we don't have to change anything on the exterior, just all the interior finishes, carpet tiles, painting, lighting, et cetera. Uh, in all these buildings. And that's kind of it for a summary. And if I go back to the site plan, I can just reference maybe circulation which, um. I believe, uh. Greg already did for you, but just to give you a, an architect's perspective. If I may. So there's five buildings, this is the big one called E and C, A and B, and this is the little one I call it a small house, which is D. So they're creating, uh, or we're creating, proposing which you saw on the other site plan. A walkway right down the middle to a new basketball court over here. And, uh, enough garbage dumpsters that when people leave their apartment buildings, whether it's A, C, or B, they'll all reach the garbage. Uh, to deposit their garbage in a pretty, without walking, a pretty close fashion. All these parking is existing here, uh, like he said, the downlighting will be upgraded at the parking lot and. So we believe that this project will. When it's, you know, painted, refinished, then upgraded on the site, it'll be quite an attractive residential. Area for Groton and may even become talk of the town. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Charles.
Okay, so let me do the, the share thing again if I. Stop share, okay. You're, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you, are there questions, um, that you would like answered before I briefly conclude or?
I want to hold off on the questions till after the staff.
Okay, then if I, if I could just reserve a couple of minutes at the end to conclude, um, I, I turn it over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I, I think this kind of project is, is what the zoning commission was actually envisioning when they adopted this. Multi-unit, uh, conversion regulation, you know, it's, it's a fully developed site, they're just going to convert it to. Do a different use, uh, the use that's there right now has kind of outlived its, its usefulness for the community and. You know, it's, it's a development that's not on a green field. Oh, I also want to note that the mailings that were required by the public hearing were in water. Um, so I'm just, I'll just, um, briefly go over, I don't want to repeat what Greg said, but just to highlight, okay, this portion of this site is in the WRPD. The pavement in that area is being removed, so that will go from impervious to pervious. Um, stormwater system is going to be, um, cleaned and it is going to be improved with a hydrodynamic separator, something that's not on the site right now. Um, lighting, as was mentioned, is, um, really pretty old out there and almost like spotlights, so that will get changed out to. To lighting that meets the current standards. Bank hall, restaurant is all going to be, um, converted to space for the tenants, um, I think you can kind of see that, especially in the main building. You know, the rooms are, are fairly small, um, but there will be a good deal of, um, work from home space that's going to be out in the. Old restaurant area. The, the crosswalk across King's Highway, I think most of you have been here for the past. Two to three applications along this stretch of Bold Star Highway, I think it started with. The conversion of Rosie's Diner to the Oh Boy Diner and then to, to Five Guys. There is an existing crosswalk across Route one eighty four that is on the east side of King's Highway. So while there are sidewalks along the frontage of this property. You know, you hit a, an unprotected way to get across King's Highway to get to the, the crosswalk. Get over to Walmart, I mean, that is one of the advantages of putting this site into multifamily, there's all kinds of things you can walk to, there are restaurants and they're shopping. Um, but you want to do it safely. So with the Oh Boy Diner, um, when you approved that. You required that the applicant do to the best of their ability to work on the crosswalk there. They did explore that, it turned out that it was incredibly expensive, they came back the next year and that, that condition was, was removed. You discussed it briefly with the conversion of the days in, but did not require it, these folks have taken the steps to actually contact DOT and are really are committed to. Installing that walk, provided, you know, that it's not incredibly expensive, it. Shouldn't, I hope it will not be as the light was recently in the last couple of years updated by, by DOT, so I'm hoping that's an easier, an easier fix here. That's all I have.
You had one item on dumpsters.
Oh, right, um. So the revised plans do show more dumpsters onsite than what we had originally seen, uh, they were. They were not in convenient locations and that has been addressed.
We have no, anyone in the public wish to speak to us tonight?
There might be someone.
Anyone online.
So if, if anyone who is attending via Zoom wants to, um, address the commission, you do need to raise your hand so we can recognize you.
So I'll open up to the commissioners and start with you, Hal.
Yeah, just want to make sure with regards to the public hearing and the consideration. Then we have it showing up later as a site plan approval. Are these separate things for?
Yes, they are separate applications, they are separate.
Right now, the only decision we're making is approving the change of use.
That is the, that's the topic of the special permit, so this is the special permit public hearing.
Gotcha, it's a change of use. That's right, so that's, that's also be regarding here, okay. The only thing that puzzled me. That regarding change of use was the, uh. The banquet hall. It's enormous compared to, I mean, it was a motel and they put this enormous banquet hall addition at the back. And you're actually removing the bar and the banquet hall, I can see having the gym and the storage unit, that makes sense, but so these, an enormous banquet hall. That. Seems to be much more than is applicable to what could be used here, I just can't even, I know you just fill into space, I understand that was a. Just an easy thing to do and fill in the space with couches and it's not going to be just couches, I imagine, I've seen your, your images. But what is the, your thoughts on what is actually going to go in there, because that's an awful lot of space. Completely out of proportion to. A fairly modest development.
I may have to defer at this point to, to Leila, but my understanding is, is that the banquet hall was going to be converted to common space. For the use of the residents, whether storage, couches. You know, uh, workrooms, um, areas where they can congregate. Uh, but I, I'm going to have to at this point defer to Leila to see if there's some other.
This is Leila again for anyone who's online, um, so, yeah, so that's just basically a temporary filler, what we've done in another property, actually Rhode Island. Is we've converted that to event space for the tenants, so we're probably not going to use both sides. Cause I, I think you're referring to that back, left side was all couches and the right side was all couches.
Yeah.
We might do a game room there, or we might also do like, uh, tenant event space that they can rent out and throw their own events there. We haven't really decided yet, the common area is kind of the last thing that we deal with, and we see if there's any other creative amenities that we can create. But we probably won't just have couches and chairs and tables there, so we're always kind of brainstorming what we think would be a value add.
Any part, this might come up with a site plan. As you say, it's the event space that you can rent out, that's different from having a park.
Yeah, I mean, you know, kind of like um, like in apartment buildings, you can have like a, like a long table, if people don't have dining rooms in their apartments, if they want to invite family over, they can.
Oh, yeah, well, I understand having that kind of lounge.
Yeah.
But. One, it's magnitude, it's kind of a, a way above and beyond.
Yeah.
If you're saying, oh yeah, it's something that can be rented out, which is what I think maybe five years in the future might happen, and that's why I'm being cautioned against here, but it has. As I say, I don't want to comb, combing all the site plan parts with this.
Yeah.
But that's the, that's a part that gives me a little bit of a, of a headache.
Yeah, definitely something we can discuss once we, you know, fully make those plans.
And otherwise, uh. It's kind of a no brainer, I think the. I did notice, maybe, I'm sorry, let you sit down again, is that, I noticed all your other projects, by the way, are all deeply urban.
Yeah.
They're multi-multi-story, nothing like this.
Um, so, it depends, so some of those that you see um that we've just featured in there are, are more of the urban ones. Um, we have a property in Dearborn, Michigan, um it's sort of a suburb outside of Detroit, it's on, on the Dearborn line. Um, so that's a very similar property to this, it's two stories, they're not high rises, generally trend away from high rises. There's one in there that you see that's a thirty-story tower in Springfield, Illinois, that's pretty unusual for us. Um, we kind of like to stick to buildings that from the exterior kind of resemble multifamily, it makes kind of the conversion process easier for us. Um, so yeah, generally that's our model, um so this actually, this is our favorite property in the portfolio, because this kind of fits the template. Um, yes, well, once we have.
If you're just looking at your Good Homes experience and overwhelmingly on page two, there's fifteen. Great big tall urban buildings that are nothing like this.
Yeah, yeah.
Problems.
That's, those are, you know, kind of the development experience, the principles of, of the team, so that includes hotels, those include apartment buildings in. New York, Miami, across the US, Las Vegas, yeah, a little bit different than this one.
All right, I can't fault the idea of just, it's for, I mean, it's almost like it more of like a change of management than a change of anything else, how, how, how the structure is being managed, it's already hotel, it's already coming going. They already have kitchen facility, already too small for what they are, I imagine they'll do a little bit better. So I, I have no issue with. Are, are we, uh, oh, Mr. Chairman, are we limiting our?
I'm gonna go to green.
Are we limiting our questions at this point to change of use? Well, I, I just have like general questions.
You know, trying to resolve all these.
Okay, like what I would do probably is I'll just, I just have a few, you know, a few questions here, and then I'll just read them out and then whoever. Feels like they have the best answer can respond. So, uh, I, I, that. Greg, I think when you spoke about the new entrance coming in. Uh, that was approved previously and now there, it's going to be actually implemented. That was coming off of one eighty-four, I believe.
I think it was just a side.
That's a sidewalk.
It's a sidewalk.
Okay. Answer my question, I thought that that was a, I, I couldn't make that out, all right, uh, the, the part, what is the change in? Uh, impervious to. To pervious surfaces, because I know we're reducing, removing a parking lot, but we're replacing with a basketball court, so that doesn't really. A little change that.
The basket, with the great fetish again, fetish engineering, uh, the basketball court is already paved, it's already impervious.
So that's not part of.
Really just, really just striping.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, um, so actually I think we have. Existing is sixty-one point four percent, and I can give you the square foot result, so we're reducing it to fifty-seven point eight.
Okay.
So it's a reduction, uh.
No, but that's, that's what's important to me, is to see that go down, if you can't help it. The, uh, as far as those dumpsters and how they're going to work, it looks like they have swinging doors.
Yes.
Uh, is that gonna be? Like, uh, can, how will that work if there's snow, is there someone on site who's going to remove snow? Well, those, I will.
Sure there's an onsite maintenance group, but I, Leila can speak to that.
So, so that's actually the Pegasus, so Pegasus does the ongoing maintenance.
Okay.
They contract with third parties, uh, and they bring them in like snowplowers, you know, landscapers, things like that, maintenance requests, so that's all handled.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do, do you anticipate any children at this site, or, and then are there any amenities for them?
Yeah, so it, it depends, on this site, we think there might be more than on our other properties, um because there's, there's larger one bedrooms and two bedrooms. Um, we haven't contemplated that, that could be a good amenity to put in that extra common area, perhaps a playground or something. Uh, inside in that second uh clubhouse space, but again, we haven't, we haven't built that out yet, but that's definitely something we would.
I think Charles mentioned something about ADA, A and B type apartments, I didn't see, couldn't see, like if there's, are there any, anything other than just a. Small standard bathroom, or is it, is there any access for ADA?
No, well, there, there is, there are ADA spaces outside, I think up to nine or something like that, so there are ADA.
I'm talking about the apartments themselves, are there any that would be?
Saying, there's existing ADA bathrooms in there, we just didn't survey and uh, put it on the zoning drawings. That'll come in the, you know, when we submit for permit, you'll see type A and type B. And wherever we have to modify to meet the codes, if we need more type As, then we'll modify some bathrooms. Otherwise, there, there are existing ones there that are type As, but it's not on this particular plan for zoning.
Okay.
All right, if I may, Mr. Chairman, for the record, that was Charles Wyman back.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I was, you know, I mean, when I see these things, I just. The, the door to the bicycle storage area, that, how is that secured? The exterior door that goes to the outside, is there some way that people get in and out, what do they do?
Yeah, so, so generally our plan, just across the portfolio, we, we have keep-ups, that's the.
Okay.
The Pegasus.
All right.
So that's external and then also to get within.
And tenants will have that?
Yeah.
All right. That's it. Nothing else. So.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, I just, I, it's a very interesting project and I think it's a, I appreciate what you're doing with that location, sorry. Important plus dairy.
Oh.
I don't think it's working, it's flashing.
You can borrow Steve's.
Thanks, Stephen, sure. But I was um curious, when you said you, you were really targeting the sixty to hundred twenty percent uh median income, and would that be like Groton's median income?
Yeah.
Which is, I know, it was just in a paper, it was interesting, they were talking about, you know, how much affordable housing, the major, bigger towns around here have. Bigger towns, which are still quite small, but they're, the towns, um and Groton's was like sixty-eight, eight forty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
So if you took your ranges, I would say people were making from a little over forty-one thousand, will make it over eighty-two thousand.
Yep.
And I was just curious, uh, because. Oh, I know, we all started working, that was, that was a lot of money back then, but your rent was like so much of it, you know?
Yeah.
And you still even with the forty-one thousand dollar annual income, you'll think you have rents that people can afford.
Yeah, so for studios, we, our plan is to offer between nine hundred to eleven hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, these are extremely affordable, uh, you know. To, their, their market rate, but they're affordable, but yeah, to your point, I mean, we're targeting kind of between the thirty-five thousand to eighty-five thousand dollar range across the country. Um, yeah, it's sixty to hundred twenty, because under sixty, as you know, is, you know, public housing. Um, so, this is just kind of the, the type of housing that's not being built ground up. Partially because the rents are so low that it doesn't justify the cost of building it ground up, so part of what allows us to be able to charge such low rents. Is that we're converting hotels, so our cost basis is much lower than otherwise if we build it ground up.
Right, and then, would then this whole building or only part of it be considered affordable housing?
So it wouldn't be affordable, like, from a, from a legal sense, from a capital A, but it will be affordable to people who are in that income range and below sixty percent AMI, so if you actually. Take the sixty percent number, um, it, it's lower than that, we don't want people to be paying more than thirty percent of, of their income.
Right, right.
So that's sort of the, the benchmark that we use, so we, we kind of take it, because right now fifty percent of the country is paying over thirty percent of their income on rent. Obviously, ill advised, so we've checked the, the median area income and that's how we set our rent.
Okay, that's interesting, because I think when people were talking about, on the paper, you either have affordable housing or you have, well, as a lot of people live on the coast and there's all range there. But it's interesting, include a group like this, because you might have a lot of young professionals and, you know, starting.
Yeah, it's, it's known as the forgotten middle, so, you know, no one's really addressing this uh on a large scale.
Okay, and I guess, uh, one other thing, is there any requirement to have electric vehicle charging stations? In the facility?
So there, there's no requirement, we actually are planning to do that in a lot of our locations, particularly, there's one in Glenview, Illinois. Um, where the town has suggested that we do that, that's definitely something, um, if, if the market demands that, that's definitely something that we.
Just curious, I don't know if Walmart has any.
I haven't checked, I haven't checked, I'm sure they do.
There, there was one over by a Marshall's.
Yeah, Chuck E. Cheese.
It was all Tesla.
I remember that.
Tesla charges.
Marshalls.
Marshalls, sorry.
There's a couple right out here in the parking lot.
Oh, I know, look at, look at, right there, free, right?
For an electric car.
I know, it's not affordable housing, like a car range.
Oh.
Yeah, they give them cheaper, but, um, okay, well, I think it's very interesting to put this in our thinking too, you know, but. So, thank you, that's all I have.
Thanks, Steve.
Um, yeah, I'd like the, like the project a lot, um, like the fact that you're reusing something that was obviously having some distress. And, uh, you know, not letting it go into disrepair, um, I, just going through the table that, um. Greg had gone through, uh, with parking and, um. You're still like way over parked and it's, you know, I, I guess there's nothing wrong with it, but, you know, turning some of that land back and making it. You know, green space again, but, um, that's neither, that's, that's not, you know, any requirement at all, just an observation. The, um, the question I did have though was, um, fire. Um, fire departments, is, there obviously has to be a difference in between something that's a rental, you know, and as an apartment. You know, that somebody's going to be there all the time versus, um. You know, something that somebody only stays in for a night, um, they're all good with everything you've done?
So I think that will get addressed at the building department level, um. I think, as we start to look at actual construction drawings for buildings themselves.
Okay.
But the fire marshal has reviewed this project.
He has.
He has.
Okay.
Has, and he understands that, you know, we, this commission is basically looking at things outside of the building and so he's commented on um fire lanes and things of that nature, but.
But Greg. Which should have been good from the get-go.
Right, but Greg is right, once the building permit plan comes in, that's when he does his full review of the interior.
Okay, and with that, a couple of the questions already got answered, so, uh, I'm, I'm good.
Kevin?
Um, sure, so, um, I was also interested in the demographic side of it, so your target for studios, I'm just saying, from a business perspective, nine hundred to eleven hundred, and the square footage on those is approximately?
So I think the smallest is three hundred and fifty square feet and it goes up to the high four hundreds.
Okay, and then what bedroom price, um, per your target, price for these, um, apartments?
Sorry.
Your one bedroom?
One bedroom?
Yeah.
Uh, I think the range is between twelve and thirteen hundred.
Okay. Um, and then, which is, just sounds kind of funny, but it's a basketball court, which I never see people playing basketball outside anymore, pickleball's a big one. So, but to staff, you're not limited though, if you say you're gonna have a recre, they could go to whatever the best uses, correct?
That's exactly right, they just, they are encouraged to provide recreational amenities under this conversion section, they're not necessarily required to do it. Right, but, but right, there's, there's no, there's nothing in the regulations that say one basketball court, two pickleball courts, three tennis courts, anything like that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, yeah, that'd be great.
That's a good space for the banquet area.
There you go.
You can put it inside, so, and I just wanted to pick up what Deb said, I think, um, you know, I came on a lot later than some of you as far as planning or zoning, now it's a single. And this is what we envisioned, and so I think it's a tremendous project and I hope from this plan we all agree, and then you execute on it well, because, um. I think it adds a lot of value to our town, we're very appreciative of it, so.
Thank you.
So I just, that's good, a couple.
Really good to, uh. Have some low-cost houses.
Or lower cost, right?
I had one, one question that, one of the items written up in what we were given. Was talking about, uh, bus traffic on Route twelve. Is there gonna be some easy way for people in this to? Get down to Route twelve? Or do they have to go across the street to the shopping center and then get it at that place? Because it, I don't know if it, it's possible or not to build a walkway down toward that.
You know, I think, I think, um, Groton Square across the street actually is a stop, um, on the, on the seat.
Oh, it is, so that makes sense.
Also where you change buses.
So that makes that walkway across.
Right.
Twelve, I mean, one eighty-four. Because I assume the type of people living here will not want to drive cars, so.
Walkway across King's, not King's Highway that's missing, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, this, uh, walkway going across here.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're counting on, on that way really to get people to public transportation. Which may be very important to the type of people running. And some of the, the architectural plans showing the room layouts. Showed some in the middle of, on building E, there's no table or anything to sit down to eat. What's the resolution on that, or, or these, I mean, that doesn't, to me, sound very realistic, but.
Yeah, so I, I think that was just what the layout is showing, so we've actually done, uh, two model units that are finished, that are smaller in square footage than the ones that were in the plan. Also in the property of Rhode Island, there are creative ways of configuring the room, but the plan is to have a four-seater dining room table, like a circular table that actually is able to fit.
But it wasn't shown on the drawings for these.
Not shown on the drawings, it kind of depends on where you put the bed, but it is able to fit.
It is, okay. And there, I didn't see any space for clothing storage in the room, how does that get addressed?
Yeah, so as part of the kitchenettes, we also have cabinetry that's going in, um, to add storage there. Um, depending on the unit configuration, we do have these armoires that are provided to us from, uh, the manufacturer that's making cabinets. So sort of like a whole armoire, kind of a standard closet that we put in there, is a standalone closet.
Where does, where does that go?
It can go in the entryway, that's.
In the end, it would go in the entryway, okay.
Actually, the bathroom has its own storage already in there as well.
It just didn't show up. I would think it needs someplace.
Yeah, so for this, for, with our whole business model, so obviously we have a high concentration of studios. Um, so all of our properties, a big focus of ours is tenant storage, so that's partially why we're still focused on at least having a one-to-one ratio of storage facilities to use.
Yes, I thought that was good. But you do need some storage, but you sort of have a standard. System.
Yeah, everyone needs a place to put their waters.
I just had a couple of questions.
Yes.
Deb, the electric vehicle that was mentioned, is that not part of the version?
That's correct, it is not, um, and they're not, uh, disturbing more than fifty percent of the site, which is the trigger to.
Got you, all right, I kind of thought that's what, I saw you digging through your book. Got you. All right. I kind of thought that's what, I saw you digging through your book. And then I, I, I just want to weigh in on that, uh, intersection at one eighty four. I think it's really important that that happened. Uh, it wasn't so important when this was a hotel and the other, and we didn't imagine, because I know we had conversations about it. People weren't gonna go from a hotel to go shopping at Walmart. But that's not gonna be the case anymore. So I really would like to see that happen if it can. That's it. I just wanted to make sure that I was clear on that one. That's all. Thanks. Looks great.
So, does anyone, you know, anyone on the public wish to, had any comments or have any questions? Does anybody on the commission have any thing else they want to address? Staff have anything?
Not regarding, not regarding change of years. Not regarding.
No, I went for the public hearing. I'm sorry. That's concerned. If not, then, uh, I guess there's no reason.
Did, um, she want to give a wind up at the end?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I won't belabor the point, but if I, if I may speak briefly.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you very much. And again, I'm not going to belabor the point. Uh, I'm gonna say I feel like Deb and, and other members of the commission have done a great deal of my job for me. I think you all recognize that this is an appropriate conversion for this property. Um, we have provided you with a narrative that describes how under section nine, we meet each and every one of your special permit criteria. I'm not gonna go through them. I know you've read them and I know you're well prepared. Um, similarly, you have special conditions for, related specifically to conversions under section five, which I believe Greg addressed all of them. I have to admit, some of it was still garbled, so I'm not sure. So if any of you have any questions on whether any of those conditions have been met, I would ask, um, I would ask you to bring that up. Uh, the only thing I want to say to you is, to me, the overarching question is, does what's being proposed here meet with your overall comprehensive plan of development? And as Deb pointed out, absolutely. You have the wherewithal and the foresight to create regulations for this very thing, for this very conversion. And, and, uh, again, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but when you think about the area where this is located, the connections to transportation hubs and highways and access to your major employers, to the fact that they're offering, and I get it's not affordable with the big A, with the deed restrictions, but we're talking workforce, uh, affordable housing, where you're talking about a very intense commercial use, like the Walmart Plaza on one side, and you've got single family residences on the other. What more perfect transitional use could you ask for this property? Um, it is certainly not as an intense of a commercial use as a hotel. Um, it fits nicely with the neighborhood and provides a great, a great transition between those, uh, competing, competing uses. Um, and so because, uh, you know, it meets all of your conditions as required for conversion, because it meets all of your criteria for special permit. Um, and because again, overall, it absolutely comports with your comprehensive plan as you defined in your own regulations, I commend you to approve it. And I, and I thank you for your attention.
Yeah. So does anyone have any, any issues or any reason to keep the, the hearing open? If not, I'll make a motion to close the, uh, public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second. By Steve. You got that? Does anyone have any questions on the motion, comments? So upon on, uh, on the motion to close the public hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. So we can move on then to a consideration of public hearings on the, uh, special permit. Three seventy eight. We have a motion that was given to us by staff. It was, does that applicant have that?
Absolutely.
So does anyone have any questions or concerns with the motion? Nothing, all right. I'll make a motion to approve special permit number three seventy eight brought in and sweets ninety nine Gold Star Highway to convert the existing buildings from a hotel to a hundred and fifteen unit, multi-unit buildings. Findings and reasons for approval. Commission finds that this application complies with section five point one dash eight H multi-unit dwellings conversion of the zoning regulations. The commission also finds that this application complies with the special permit criteria in section nine point four dash six of the zoning regulations in that it does not alter the essential characteristics of the area, does not cause traffic congestion or safety conflicts, and does not conflict with the purposes of these regulations. Is there a second?
Second.
It's moved in second, like Michael Kane. Any questions on the motion? Any comments? Hearing now will vote on approval of a special permit. Three seventy eight, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. I guess our site plan discussion is later, so. Moving on, the next item is approval of the minutes of previous meetings. We have November tenth minute meetings. I'll entertain a motion. Approval of the minutes, some of them ten, so moved. Is there a second? Does anyone have any corrections to the meetings minutes?
I do not.
Very well, then we'll vote on approval of the, let's see, have. Line or item on page three, on report of staff. That, or it reads a pa- application update provided to staff should be buys on those three. Eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. I thought it was a net, but it's just, so many of my question, what I meant. No one has anything else and we'll vote on approval of the minutes of meeting on November tenth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any, any opposed, any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for, uh, November twenty ninth special meeting.
So moved, moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second by Michael Kane. Does anyone have any corrections on the minutes?
The only thing that I, I, that's, I don't think, think, I don't know if it makes a difference, but, uh, Kevin is present, but he wasn't seated. And he didn't vote, but we didn't take any votes.
Well, there are no votes because.
Yeah, so I, I don't know.
There's no action.
Okay.
Right.
I just.
We, we noted that as well.
That's fine.
But, yeah, he wasn't seated, so.
That's fine, okay.
Well, there's no action then.
That I, I just saw.
Everybody.
I wanted to make sure.
There was actions, I would have been seated, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes. But everybody at the meeting, uh, special meeting can speak.
Correct.
They're all, we're all equals.
At that point, yeah.
Since there's no action. So, what, no one has any corrections? And we'll vote on approval of of the, uh, special meeting on November twenty ninth. Meeting minutes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
One.
One abstention, you weren't.
I know what you're gonna say.
That's not what you.
What?
We have one abstention, Steve. And you were the one that was abs.
Right.
Okay, so a motion is carried. Four, four in favor, one abstention. So moving on, then we have public communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications? I had one from Tom Clerk announcing that Michael Kane has been.
Oh, yeah.
Been reappointed to his position.
Five more years of me.
Were there any other candidates?
I heard it was a heated discussion. I didn't.
Was it, was it heated?
It's well worth watching.
It is.
As good as mine.
I have my standards, pain tolerance.
Does staff have?
I, I just want to note that, uh, you all received this afternoon an email from Mr. Furlong, uh, regarding data centers. That's all.
Yeah, because we should list or at least identify that we've received.
Right.
Yes.
And that was attached to the agenda.
I guess, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
Was some, this, this one, uh, page here, sorry, pages are coming up on my screen. There was one, one sheet on that he was, I think Jim Furlong was referring to the data center zoning proposal. I, I don't know who wrote that or.
Okay, and I was gonna discuss the reason.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, okay. I just didn't know, I was curious.
Yes. No, I just was trying to shorten down the timeframe.
Okay.
Not having another special. So that, that was why. So no one, no other public, does anyone in the public wish to address? Yes, not. So moving on then to subdivisions. That subdivision twenty two dash one, hind subdivision one forty seven, Peacock Avenue requests for extension.
Hi, everyone. Um, so this was a, a letter that's in your packet requesting an extension to the recording period for the hind subdivision, and there's a draft motion that should be circulated too.
Yep, I've got it here somewhere.
I think.
Let's see.
I didn't have that.
So what we draft motion in our packet?
It was not, no, it was not. It is, it is one sentence, so.
Usually just, yeah, make up the motions ourselves. Does anyone have any concern? Approving the.
No.
Abstentions? So I'm.
Ninety days.
Ninety days. So I'll make a motion then to approve a request for a ninety day extension for the recording final subdivision plans for subdivision twenty two dash one, one forty seven, Peacock Avenue to to, uh, March thirty first, twenty twenty three. Seconded by Steve. Saying, one have any comments or concerns with the motion? And then we'll vote on approval of the extension request. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, on site plans, we have S I T twenty two dash ten multi-unit dwelling, ninety nine Gold Star Highway. We have a motion for that. And it was handed.
Do I go through the whole presentation again?
No, no, I don't think.
Um, I would, we'll just answer questions specific to the site management if there are.
Yeah, no, I'm, is, is the applicant re-.
Yes.
Receive the motion. Does the applicant have any concerns with the motion?
Mr. Chairman, um, this is, uh, Carrie Olson for the record. I would just ask that, um, all of the presentation previously provided to this commission during the special permit application being incorporated by reference, so, so we don't have.
Oh, no. No, you don't have to.
Okay. Thank you.
Have any questions since we've already heard the, the presentations?
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
And I'll start, yeah, I'll start with people going around.
Okay.
To ask any questions. Start with you, Hal.
All right. Um, I guess I've got some things, mostly have relation, relation to the landscaping plan of all things, but the landscaping list or this here kind of confused me that it shows the tree list and shrub list with quantities of twelve and twelve each. And I don't know what that means. And it doesn't, doesn't really seem to reflect what's going on. Is it really twenty four or is it twelve each of those things, which would be three times that much? And it doesn't seem like talk about, mentioned the Arbor Whitey one around the, I'll call it the open green field. What's happening?
This is great fetish with fetish engineering. Um, so it's twelve shrubs, twelve trees total. Can we just put some options down a beach? For probably no good reason, but to give, to give them options, um, uh, in case something's not available or makes more sense to put a red maple versus a what we put, so.
Well, how much is already there? Because I can't really, you didn't poke out what's existing trees and.
Yeah, we probably did some in one spot. We probably said existing. Uh, so the darker ones are the ones that are, are not there and are proposed.
Oh, okay.
Uh, the lighter ones are the ones that are there and that were shown, and all these were shown on the ninety five plan. Uh, so we basically took the ninety five plan or related under our plan and said, all right, this, there or not there. And yes, the Arbor Whiteys around the recreation area as well as, uh, along King's Highway frontage. Uh, we did not quant, I think we might have quantified them by just spacing, uh, five foot spacing. Uh, but we can add that as a technical item if, uh.
And, and among those things, that's like I want to speak is that surrounding the entire thing with a barricade of Arbor Whitey also doesn't seem appropriate. I don't know why you're blocking.
Well, it's. Well, it's kind of close to the, it's kind of close to the Gold Star Highway and the entrances and so forth. So we kind of give a little privacy.
Makes sense on the west side and it makes sense on the north side. Doesn't make any sense.
Well, it's parking on the other side. I mean, I, you know.
I have a problem with having this boxed off like that. It just becomes something that for security use, and I'd even say it becomes invisible, which is not a good thing.
Yeah.
I like to see some transparency in there. It won't be acoustically make any difference whether there's plantings there or not. One strip of Arbor Whitey is like nothing. But I get the idea of having it blocked off a bit. If in fact it's going to enjoyable space, uh, then it needs more than Arbor Whitey. You need a few extra trees in there too. So it's making this into something that's residential. It's more than just putting a, a barricade wall of Arbor Whitey around it.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see that amplified, including stripping off a bunch of the Arbor Whitey on the south side so that there's clear visibility of what the heck is going on inside there. Uh, which unfortunately, I think you need to have eyes on to an area like that. It can't be invisible. But now I'm seeing, if I close up, right now I see somewhere dark blocked in. I don't know what's what, but it's going to be a mix of things at whatever spacing you've got there. So I guess I can't fault it. I mean, originally it was planned out with landscaping appropriate for a motel. And now it's residence, so, or just as soon see much more on the on the tree list. And not, and how much on the shrub list is maybe, and that's enough for adding shrubs, but you might want to add some more. They're all maples, right? Oh, it's a birch. Then twelve, adding twelve to what's there, because I even, I've been out there a lot and I don't remember it seeming like there's a lot happening. Are there pretty sickly shrubs out there or not, are they?
I think some of them, I think some of them might be troubled.
Yeah.
And I think anything that, you know, is, you know, needs to be cut down and removed will get replaced.
Okay, and that's, that's.
And I can.
That would be a technical line to make sure the spacing that's shown on here is what we end up with, with healthy trees. Not just whatever happened to be left over. Already covered. Let's see what else we have here. We talked about the lounge. One of the things is with the bike storage, indoor bike storage. I'm kind of planning people, seeing people coming in and wanting to store their bikes inside. And then they have to go around the, the outside of the building with their bikes and then go through the outside door. Park their bike in the thing and then come back through the whole lounge to get back to where they're going or go back out that door again to get to the other units. Not quite sure how that actually works with, with bike storage in this.
It's not. Well, I think you can go around the either side of the building. We did kind of show a clear path along the backside of the building from, from this side over to kind of this area. I think, yeah, I think over time you're going to get certain paths that are worn out and people are going to.
Well, right now the building's in the way. That's what I'm saying. To get from the, to the outer, the outer buildings, you have to walk all the way around the building. If it's within the building, then you have to go through half the building to get back to your bicycle. So it's, it's kind of the, the nature of where this ended up. Want to make sure we're not just paying lip service to bicycling pedestrians when we say, oh, we've got it covered. If we want to make it so that people actually use it. And if it's really uncontrolled people to use, then they're just going to be dragging their bicycles through into their rooms or whatnot.
Yeah, I mean.
Not in those rooms.
We do have. So we do have seven of those bike racks spread outside bike rack spread out throughout the site too. So I think if you're on a Saturday, you may leave your bike on an outside bike rack, lock it up and, and go into your, into your apartment. Um, if you're not going to use it for a couple of weeks or maybe the winter, you'll put it into bike storage.
You're going to use it overnight, not using overnight. You're going to park it inside.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's why I said during the day on Saturday.
So I'll take some place in this to kind of address what the heck is really going to happen with bikes if you actually live there. Not just provide the space and it should be, see it here someplace on the outside. So this is site plan. I can't be commenting what's going inside. But I'm not seeing a reflect. I've just seen a sidewalk that goes around the outside of the building. And it doesn't seem to accomplish it. Not going to ride their bikes on the sidewalk in the outside of the building. Is the driveway goes there?
Well, there's a driveway that runs around the back.
Why the bikes up to that back door? You say it's going to be a key card swipe kind of through that single door to get in. Now maybe that's the best you can do.
Yeah, then you drop your bike off on this side and you, if you're over here, you maybe kind of take the clear path through the back or maybe you cut through the building. I think there's going to be a lot of options. People are going to kind of find their way to get places.
Is there an entrance, entry, entrance, exit, entry on the opposite side of that banquet area? Well, two, that, that's just the lounge back there, but at least it gets you into the building that we're going all the way around the outside of the building.
Yeah, I think their doors.
Um, there too.
Um, both the backs. I don't have the architectural.
Yeah, which is, that's the best you can do.
Share.
It's not a great.
You're going to share. So there's doors, um, you know, kind of basically all the way around.
Okay. Well, the one that did not share is the one that.
This one.
That one there is the one that would kind of apply to building scene would go in, I suppose. So.
That one's coming out right here.
Yeah, right.
And then there's a couple coming back here and there's walks basically that get you to the back here.
So I want you to be a, it's a pretty good hike. I mean, you can't rely on, if I'm keeping, if I live in. I'm not going to.
Well, if you're riding.
Vaguely consider keeping my bike in that storage as a, even if it's a weekend, it's a block away to get to my bike.
I don't think it's.
But you're doing it for exercise.
Get around.
I get.
We want to get around with these things. The shopping with it, whatnot.
I think if I'm living in three hundred and fifty, I'm getting out as much as I can. I don't care about that law. I'm not arguing. I'm not being argumentative.
Looking forward to that. The apartments are actually inside the building, probably as much as.
Yeah.
That part is kind of true. Um, a little detail to it is that the it was already approved prior way back, can I heat back to gold? We put in side. Let's go for a walk. They're not going to walk there. Back to Gold Star Highway, walk down. Back to Route twelve and you can't. It only goes north. There's no sidewalk. You can't put it inside the highway interchange there. So I, I think for the safety of the people on there and everything else, it's better if rather than try to connect it same amount of paving. These. Northern driveway. And goes where people will want to walk.
I got across the.
I. I'm going to cross it there anyway. So I can either cross it here where people have already slowed down or I can cross it right there where I'm going to hope nobody's making a turn. There's nobody. It's, there's nothing to go down, down here.
Well, I think if they're all landing up down here, they're going to take the walk on Kings.
I'd say zero people. These people, he will.
You put a cross here and through this way, you're. Um, I, I don't know. I mean. Approved. That's what we were asked on there. I'm not a big fan of entering this. I think you're better off people crossing here where they could see cars coming and turning in. If you're crossing mid.
That would be safer and they're going to do it anyway. And so if you can highlight something that people are going to do anyway, whether you put a walkway there or not, I'd rather have. Yeah. I don't know what else to do about it here, but you got the walkway, which is kind of, is kind of a walkway. A bill, the main building to the basketball court. And then you want them to take a left hand turn. And zero people will do that. They will walk because that's not how they want to get to landscape park. That's actually the way they want to go just to get to, to buy a burger. They'll go across the parking lot on a diagonal. Think that your sidewalk should put that in some way. Now you're thinking that maybe they're wanting to come out front door and go. Sounds logical, but the sidewalk. Big one.
Mr. Chairman, this is Carrie. We interrupt. I hope you can hear me. Um, I'm, I'm wondering if we can turn off the overhead camera. It seems that whenever the overhead camera is on and people are talking through that, it gets completely garbled. And so I, I couldn't hear a good portion of what was being said there, but, but I do want to just, just briefly and without insulting anybody, because again, I might've missed quite a bit of it. It's very, very hard to design any site for people who no matter what you provide to them, are going to take the path, the shortest path and maybe the, the least safe path. And I think everybody's in agreement when it comes to the Walmart, um, that the smartest thing is to focus people across King's Highway to what is now an upgraded crosswalk area. Um, rather than create some new crosswalk across the Gold Star Highway, you know, further south, I believe it is. And, and, and I think the same thing with respect to the bike storage. I guess the one thing that I would say about that is that there are plenty of multifamily apartment complexes that offer no sufficient storage, much less bike storage. This is like a huge amenity and I would think that anybody, even if they have to walk a little further to put their bike in a safe place, uh, and be able to have, uh, under roof storage as opposed to a bike rack or something. Or something where they have to take it up to their apartment and take up area in their apartment would be, would be very grateful for it. But that's not to discredit the concern that there are some that, that might not think it's convenient. I, I, I see it as an absolute amenity and an asset to the development. And I think the majority of people would, would agree with me on that. And will there be outliers? I definitely think there will be. But, um, but I think it's a really good use of an existing space uh, that cannot serve a more functional purpose uh, at this, at this juncture. And with that, I will, I will be quiet until my next opportunity.
I just want to make sure because apparently you can hear me well enough is that I'm in no way not proposing Gold Star Highway get another crosswalk.
Right.
That was not part of the issue. We were just discussing how to get to the existing intersection. And one of them is right now we have a walkway coming out the front door headed at an angle down towards King's Highway, but it never gets there. So if we want people to go to King's Highway and take the sidewalk system there, then the sidewalk system should get them there. And that would encourage them.
Understood. And you're absolutely right. I missed all of that. So with that caveat, with that caveat, um, I'm going to have to defer to our engineer and our design experts to see if there is some way to to satisfy the commission in that regard that's feasible. And thank you.
Really, that is a technical item to try to resolve.
Yes. And I think it is a balance between where people are going to actually walk and trying to provide a safe avenue.
Yeah. And I think actually the only thing right now, because a lot of that's already paved. And you just need to extend the piece to make it across some existing grassed area. Like about the book of lying King's Highway.
Yes, we're getting, uh, yeah, we have a little bit of room there maybe to do that. Yes.
I think we can.
Definitely there. Yeah.
Encourage people to know your way and we'd like them to go.
Yeah.
Yeah. Really saying the old sidewalk was, it's not practical today with today's.
And then we're going to revisit the ninety, nineteen ninety-five approved.
That's, this will just.
Yes.
This will just modify that.
So modify. This will correct that.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I think that's all I, that's all I have on the same thing.
Um, I, I guess because Hal brought these things up, I would just like to weigh in as well. I don't know what that sidewalk, was that state approval? To do, to put that in.
Which sidewalk?
The one that goes down.
Going onto the Gold Star Highway.
No, that was a requirement of a previous site plan to the interior sidewalk rule, you know, you.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah.
Frontage walk inside.
I guess it's just I, I, I'm going to be neutral on it at this point because it doesn't seem like, like you would go left there very easily unless there was more sidewalk.
You can't get there.
But it's even difficult back then.
You can't. There's no sidewalk. It's right. This is a ramp. There's a highway ramp. There's no.
And I wouldn't put a sidewalk there ever. State would be. Yeah, I did it because.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it. I'm just, yeah, I just don't, I don't know.
How, how, um, practical it is. Uh, and then you were, I was looking over here and the maple trees are four to six feet. I just seems like that's barely. I think that's, yeah, it's a, that's by size, but. Okay, that's fine. It just seems like if we're going to put trees in, I hope that we don't use the red maple because it seems like if that's how it was called that.
I don't think you could find one.
No, I don't think so. It's.
It's more strange.
The dwarf red maple. I just saw it when, when, when it pulled up here. So that's it. That's all I have.
So.
I was curious about that point. I Googled the red maple sizes because I know there are red maples that are enormous. But it said here, if you can trust, of course, your phone, we have to. Um, it said they were like forty to sixty feet high and the spread was about forty feet, which is not my experience, but even so, it's not. It depends what else you do around it and all that stuff, of course.
Typically, what's listed on here is the by size, which is usually in caliber size, which is kind of strange. And it would be a forty-six caliber, inch caliber, which gives you a trumpet snorey stand on its own.
And that's huge, forty-six.
That's true. That would be.
I think it's two and a half, usually two and a half.
Okay.
Yep.
So caliber.
We'll fix it. We'll fix that.
Thank you. I just, I was like trying to imagine a tree that's small.
Wars.
No, it's just, I mean, it's, there's a lot of different varieties of red maples. That's for sure. And it's the same problem we have with the tree list. It's like hammering on. We really could be longer and it could be someday.
Anything else?
No, no.
Steve. Um, just a couple of questions on the catch basins and, um, your hydro works hydro storm. Um, I noticed that they make reference to it, an oil separator. Is that the intent of this or is it supposed to be a sediment separator?
It's both.
Both.
Uh, so that does separate out sediment and it also captures floatables, oils or whatever else it's going to flow. Uh, needs to be maintained otherwise.
Yeah. I, I was just noticing that the inlet and outlet are at the same height. So it was kind of, I didn't think it worked too well on oils, but the, do you have a bar that's highlighted? That's the size you're using?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is probably one size over one, but was required.
All right. Based on the amount of area you.
Yeah.
Um, and then a standard question that we always have, um, that you have multiple notes on here about maintaining the catch basins, well, during construction after. And is that the responsibility of the, um, and is that going to be written into? Is that because it's part of the plan?
It's because it's part of the plan. That's right.
Okay. But it's, the responsibility is definitely there. Okay. And then does that can enforced by the zoning and?
That's, that's correct. If something happens out there, so we get a complaint. Um, yeah, it's the the zoning official, code enforcement official.
Okay. Yeah. Cause you know, the, the notes there say clean at least annually after the snow and ice removal season is over and as soon as possible before spring rainfalls. You know, so I haven't seen too many people doing that. On other properties, but I'm sure it'd be better on yours. Yeah, that's it. Okay. Um, so I'm not going to restate what Hal said, but, um, you know, we just, the initial review, we talked about the sidewalk as well. And I'm very much in favor of what Hal advocates because I really think that makes the property understand. As while it's your decision, I do believe that's the, you know, it defined your way to that walkway is most important. So just, just to support what you said, I do believe that, Hal. That's all.
Uh, how do we know when that intersection improvement is too expensive? Or that, like who's making this decision?
So I, these folks have committed to work with DOT and I'm sure they will let me know, um, what the result of that is. And we will certainly require them to let us know before we issue COs on the site.
There's no, like, I don't know. This is, is there like something that you're expecting or what, what's it shock you? We're, we're, our expectations are optimistic at this point. But with DOT, you kind of never know till you get into the thick of it and actually file a, you know, do the draw.
You know, do the drawings, file an encroachment permit, see what. They're gonna say.
How do we address that? Can we demand it unless the DOT refuses it? Can we demand it with conditions or?
So, um, actually that's something you should have addressed under the special permit because it's offsite. And so.
Okay.
Then the time to do it. I, I just. Just know, once, once they get, um, their cost estimates together, um. If it seems to be too much for their budget, there are some other alternatives. As you probably know, the town has an economic assistance fund. Um, I talked to the economic, uh, and community development manager and this certainly would fall under that criteria. So there may be additional help to get that in because this. I, I think we all agree this is a really important crosswalk to have in place.
Are there ever grants provided for that other than the economic assistance? Like a state grant?
I, I don't know about the state. I just know that the town would provide economic assistance for something like this.
Well, it seems like that would make sense because it's a shared.
Right.
Sidewalk, right? And this improvement is being made by one applicant for the benefit of many.
So you would inform us.
Yes, that's right. That's right.
Does anyone have anything else on the motion? Any concerns with the motion itself? And I'll make motion to approve site twenty-two dash ten, multi-unit loan conversion. Ninety-nine Gold Star Highway with the following modifications. One, the site plan should show. All of the recreational amenities that are shown on the building architectural plans. Two, the design engineer shall certify the stormwater system has been constructed for the approved. Plan prior to the issuance of a certificate of site plan from clients. Three, any modifications to the site plan based on any federal, state or local agency requirements. Shall require additional. Review and approval by the time of Grotland land use agencies as appropriate. Four, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Is there a second?
Second.
Smooth second by Sue. Do you have any questions on the motion, comments on the motion hearing? None will vote on the motion to approve. Site plan twenty-two ten. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with this.
Thank you all very, very much for your attention. We're very, we're very excited project. Thank you. Again, and thank you. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Okay, like to move on to the next item of business. Data center. X number. Discussion. You don't need me now, right?
Yep.
Yeah, thank you. After our last workshop. Got a little upset with the lack of progress. See what goes on. So it seems like we got some input from. From the consultant and then we will have a lot of comments and basically not making any head. And step forward to back. And thinking about. This whole thing. I don't know that we want to, because we have this state statute that was developed really. Not to control data centers. Allow the towns to collect, uh. Payment, um, instead of on their property tax on by using a special payment, which would be less. And that's what the whole triggered the whole thing on. And that we really ought to address data centers and status centers and what. We think could be allowed in the town. And that's what I was trying to do here. And, and allow them, if they're small. Allow them to, uh. To be. Installed in, in Grotton. And not just necessarily limited to. Once a business, but if somebody wanted to come in and put up a real small data center. As a commercial venture and to support or allow IT support for maybe some of these small businesses. It might be worthwhile having it allowed. So I was just trying to come up with some. Some rules on the definition to get rid of. One of the problems I saw where it's said for the financial. Portion. You had to have it limited. To be a single, senior use. And I don't think we care. And that meant that if you went to the, the, on the, the H and W was recommended would mean if you had more than one use for the data center. This thing didn't apply.
That's a state statute.
Yeah.
Maybe.
But that was for financial purposes. What they're trying to do. Was say you can put a data center in, but not get taxed for all the equipment inside. You could get a top lower. Tax rate by getting a special agreement. That's what they were for.
Be nice to know whatever financial incentives were. I think that's a question I've had for months and months.
No, that was the financial assess.
Right, well, but what states me, I have no ideas, like new information.
No, that's, that's what triggered the whole thing off. Because I think was it in New Jersey? Have all these data centers and they were going to change. Their, their taxing. On these centers. And so somebody in Hartford saw this and says, oh, Connecticut can take these centers. And get some income. And that's what triggered the whole thing off. Having these large data, which I think is what people don't want.
Right, right. No, I understand people don't want here.
And that's what I was looking at. Came up with, I tried to come up with some rules that would. Not allow the big data centers, but allow small ones.
Right.
In town. And that's what I was trying to do here. And one of the things that surprised me when you look at. When you talk the size, square footage size, and then look at what a building be. To equal that. Just for the data center portion. I was surprised that when you get up to say five thousand feet. You get a building forty by a hundred and twenty-five. So maybe five thousand feet is a good amount to say, you know, wanting large.
But that in square feet.
Yeah. And that's what I was hoping to get. The commission to agree with a. A size limit here.
Yeah.
That would be realistic.
Well, we talked about power consumption.
I don't, yeah, but yeah, I think if you keep it small. That force, that forces the power consumption to be reasonable. Cuts down on your cooling. And I thought we should prohibit. Use of, uh. Power shaving by saying you can't use. Uh, internal combustion engines.
Yeah.
Or.
Yep.
Unless therefore backup power in an emergency. And define that emergency. And then say you can't use this water evaporation technique for cooling, which uses a lot of water.
Yeah.
So we might get rid of that. That's what I was trying to do. It's right up. To say, th- these are our problem areas. Keep it small.
Yeah.
And allow it to be as. Be put as a separate use. Originally, I thought we should leave it. All in the, uh. IM and IG districts, but if it's small enough, maybe we don't need that required. I can put it and say, see, yeah.
Well, it's, it's accessory. That was the idea.
Yeah, but.
Right.
But what if it's not accessory? I think we should still.
No, I, I understand that, but this encompasses both, right?
Oh, yeah. No, my, that was one of the objectives I had and a concern. Was if we didn't specify criteria for data centers, data centers. And somebody would sneak in somehow and get one in and we didn't have any rules.
Repeat that last bit? If someone was to do what?
No, came in, if we had no rules for that is, just that you can't have that. Some. Some, uh, somebody would probably figure out how to come in. And put one in or get an agreement or make the application for one. And since we've already had a ruling by. Our zoning official, that a data center is equal to a.
Tele.
Telecommunications center, you could put one in. But we don't have any rules for it.
We rescinded that, correct? Right. Do you, do you feel that square footage? You know, from your business end of it? Do you think square footage is adequate? I don't discriminate. No, because, and for this reason, so first of all, there's two new uses coming up and one actually fits exactly what Jeff's talking about. We call them end nodes. So, um, we, we locate them much closer to where we call data gravity, where people are actually doing the use, right? So you put these small data centers in and they actually, so you don't have to put this mass thing in and actually it could be great revenue as far as that's concerned. Five thousand could be appropriate.
I think that's why we still allow.
Revenue for, is that so? Um, revenue, um, because remember the revenue piece of it. Um, based on state law is whatever we negotiate that fee to be, right? So we would presume it's less than a normal tax structure as far as that. Five thousand square foot. So if we could define. That that is the type of end node that we would like, it's great. The problem is. Most of the ones that are under five thousand square feet, and this is where you see all these huge issues in the Midwest and stuff where there's no zoning. Is they're the cryptocurrency that they go in, they're, um, not well, um. Built, not well maintained, they're built to, to create something very quick and easy. And if we put those in any sort of, in my opinion, commercial type of structure, commercial zoning structures, that's wrong. So if we can somehow make that divisible. On what I described in A versus what, what is happening in many places at B, we should do it, but. I don't think square footage is that. I think that brings us into the whole next series of, of, um, qualifications like sustainability, water. Power and all those type of issues, um, because we'd have to define it. Much more finitely. And I think what we are trying to do in some ways to say how Grotton has grown up. Town of Grotton that we of course have zoning over. There's, it doesn't make sense. And I still submit that I don't think we should define it by five thousand per feet for those reasons, so.
Well, it, what is the discriminator?
I don't know.
That's my point.
Do that.
Yeah.
And I thought that one of the other concerns was you want to keep. The data centers not close to each other. So somebody isn't building a big one by buying up. And a little small lot. And linking it together. So I wanted to. They say you can't have another one. Closer than that. Just try to prevent that problem. And I thought if it was a small area and you, you say we have to meet our lowest noise specs. That that is how you can control power usage, water usage, noise. By doing that.
You know. Can we still do that by special permit? Yeah, that would still be by special.
Can't be, I don't.
Right.
I wasn't trying to worry about that.
From a land use perspective, the size makes the most, you know, frame, what we can, I mean, we said this. That's when we.
Right, and that's our, that's our swim lane, right?
That's what I was, that's what I was trying to do with this.
Yeah.
And, and make sure we weren't building. On-site power generation unless it was, uh. Non-carbon, carbon.
Yeah, so you think if you're five thousand square.
Or maybe even less.
Yeah. See, when I saw that in the package, of course, as I said, I don't know who wrote it.
I, I wrote it.
And I didn't get Calvin's. No, I didn't get Kevin.
Because it's not exactly definitions that I sent out, right?
I was kind of like.
I know that.
What am I supposed to do with this? Yeah, I thought it was more seriously with.
No, no, I wanted to say, my thoughts were if we could come out and give. Personally, what more direction? Yes, to what we want written, we'd be better off and get to the finish line.
Kind of like our questionnaire.
Yeah.
I think it was really helpful.
That's what I was trying.
But I feel like I'm missing a lot of the information. Then I didn't have time to analyze that because if I didn't know who it was from, I was like.
Well, I wasn't expecting you to do anything except talk about it tonight. I wasn't expecting anybody or maybe look at it and see, read it. Not to. Take.
I, that's my one concern that I have, Jeff, is still is what I, and I said this previously is that. What I see are IG and IM. Uh, evolving into aren't necessarily, I think, what we might have expected twenty years ago.
Well, maybe we don't want to use those, maybe.
Well, maybe we treat them differently, the IG and the IM and that, and the might, and another concern that I have is even in our IG. Like I look at pieces of like the old golf course, Birch Plank Creek, right? So it's something could potentially go in there. And right across the street are his resident, our IG is right up against residential a lot of places. So. I mean, things have to, we have to take that into consideration. Again, upon an industrial, uh, you know, where the Amtrak building is too right across the street residential. No, um. And so.
Well, that's why I put in. This buffer area from any structure containing computer servers to an adjacent residential zone. As a minimum of thirty foot.
Oh, yeah. I just wonder if that's.
Thirty foot doesn't do a.
That's enough. I mean, up on industrial.
You have to meet the noise criteria.
Yeah. The houses are so close and, and the same thing.
Oh, I don't mind changing those, those things. It's the approach I'm worried about. It does this make sense for an approach and then we can figure out. Do you want to change the, the numeric values or pick out a maximum size? And keep it small enough or we aren't going to get ourselves in trouble.
Well, if the, if the controls. Are what keeps us out of trouble. I mean, I don't care if it's Walmart size or, or garage size. It can still be crazy noisy if somebody puts something stupid in there. And so if we have the controls in place. It'll still be whatever the sound was before is what the sound has to be afterwards.
Yeah.
So.
Keep control.
So what is this? You're trying to control if one of them is noise, then control the noise, not to say we'll control the size and now control the noise.
No, I'm thinking more of the size. Well, would control noise? Because you're not, you're limiting. To have small number of servers. And it would minimize the power consumption.
Yeah. Let's work on the noises that, as I mentioned, is that you could have a pretty small one, be pretty awful. And if they're already in there because the tax structure is better. Say, look, this is, this is not working for us because it's too noisy.
Yeah, but we gotta have.
Not because it's small, it's the noise. So we should be, and noise is one that we quantify. So it makes sense just to control the.
Well, yeah, but these are the, that's why I wrote down, I can go over each one of these if you want to talk about it.
Well, I think at the beginning though. Under table permitted uses. You said add data center to uses under industrial category and allow in zones IM and IG.
Right.
That's what's, I didn't understand that. I thought that was totally. In opposition to the consensus of last meeting. It was like, that's why I was like, I don't know who wrote this.
It is different, yes, because it, I wanted to allow or put some specs in there for data center. Not just for small, no, and keep them small.
Yeah.
All of them.
See, that's, it doesn't say and keep them small or anything.
No, but that's what this, I put this.
And my other problem was since we.
That's why I left this, this. Shall not exceed XXX square feet commissioned to establish the table. The intent was for us to select the number that goes into.
Right, no, I understand more now, but just getting this as part of the package. I thought we don't agree to accessory. And then if you put.
I know that.
Data centers on the table, you would have to have Xs across, which we don't do.
I don't want to do that.
No, okay, see that wasn't.
Well, I wasn't.
It's not done yet.
No, no.
We're starting the narrative.
Just to throw this out on the table for people to review it or think about it. Does it make sense? I wasn't expecting you to do any homework.
I wanted to.
No, no, I wasn't expecting you to take any voting action.
Right. Couldn't there four or five thousand square foot data center also so include diesel generators, right?
Right.
But not for, not only used for emergency power. That's why I put this thing in.
Emergency well.
That's why I put on onsite power generation using fossil fuels is prohibited. Except for an occurrence of unforeseen loss. Of offsite power.
Yeah.
I put that in.
Do you have any idea how much power of five thousand square foot? Don't write off. But if that's some document.
Two thousand or a thousand.
Yeah, that, I got it.
Until we learn, until we learn more by actual use or application. Until we learn, until we learn more by actual use or application. I, I think this type of rules would, would keep us out of trouble. That's what I was looking.
I think that's good. And if we start with five thousand, if we think.
Or maybe we think five thousand. I mean, that's why I, I don't know what five thousand meant. That's why I created this table. I'm putting it both in a square or maybe pick some arbitrary building sizes. So you get enough, enough idea.
Yeah.
Is it, is that big, too big or too small?
The other question was what's in town? Does he ever find out what there, 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 we should have that information at the next workshop. Has contacts that the, most of the large employers and their contact, okay, what their needs are.
Yeah.
But if you look at, you know, our professional engineering group down on the one seventeen. That they are, are producing drawings using computer software. So if that type of business may want somebody else to do all the IT work because they might not have enough. Work to hire one person in charge of IT and. Somebody to do it that would also maintain the equipment. That is, that would be a data center.
That'd be an accessory data center.
No, not for the engineering firm, for the IT guy.
He would use cloud. He would just use the big.
Maybe, maybe, but maybe he doesn't want to.
Yeah.
But we ought to.
EB doesn't use cloud because they have everything secure. They want. You know, I think they use cloud.
It's just, it's just encrypted.
Yeah, I don't know whether they do or not.
Right. So, so he, um, here's my issue. So why don't we do, if, if we're five thousand, so the point is, we don't want to exclude data centers. Instead of looking at the different zoning designations, whether it's IG or whatever. Why don't we set like Loudoun County does and say, let's pick an area that is no, there's no residential around it. There's, you know, we don't have issues with it and pick an area and say this is where our, where our data center area is.
Well, that's why I put the IG.
Oh, so you're saying come up with an overlay zone? That's right.
Or you want an overlay.
Either that or, or, uh, you know, I think the thing is that I, when you have something that is such a heavy industrial use, right? You know, it's that no. A buffer includes something other than residential right there makes it to an abrupt change for me. And I think maybe that thirty feet is good for some things, but maybe we need to increase that buffer a little bit for visual and sort of, uh. You know, for, if it's up against residential. That would be my, and the IM, there's plenty of places I see in the IM where I could see something like this occurring. But then there's other places that I see probably not.
It's not a site thing. It's, it's more a visual. It's more noise or.
Yeah. Well, I mean, down that, down on Birch Plain Creek and High Rock Road would be visual.
No, yeah, but it's, it's a building.
Well, it's gonna be twelve feet in here.
I mean, you're allowed to do that for anything, I suppose. That's.
Forty feet high, so, yeah.
I mean, we're not, it, it's not going to be a visual thing. And by keeping it small, it's not going to be overpower. We're just saying you use the same regular rules.
Is that why most data centers are single floor? They really don't have. Because you really can't stack up and be able to diffuse that much heat, in my opinion. That's why even they have me bringing these trailers, which are s- single story, right?
Ventilation standpoint, it'd be very difficult.
Right. I've never seen.
And access to.
Maybe even supercomputers, none of them are ever standing, that one.
Is Horstley wouldn't going to have some proposed language?
So, so they did do some proposed language based on your discussion at the last workshop. Um, I don't know. I mean, I'm gonna forward them the, the video of your discussion here as well as Jeff's proposal tomorrow. I don't know whether or not they will have time to turn that around before the next workshop, which is next Monday. But we're talking short-term rentals then, so.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know whether or not they'll have time to turn it around in order to give. You guys enough time to look at their, what they're doing.
And I wouldn't object to seeing what they did already. We have that conversation, but this is, this is. Sounds like it's kind of, you know, we're evolving here, I think, as we're having the conversation. I would just like with something like this, that's, there's so many unknowns, especially for me. I would rather be very conservative and careful. And then, you know, a year from now, if it looks like this isn't happening, we want it to, then how do we make it happen?
Well, that's what I was concerned with, with this. And that's why I didn't like just putting Xs on for data.
Yeah.
I'd like to have conservative rules. So that if somebody does want to come in and put one in, have something there and they don't get. Just snuck in on.
Somewhere in the rules, it would say data centers are permitted as long as their square footage doesn't exceed X.
And, and with all these other criteria.
Yeah, noise. We've limited the risk at least, but the only thing I don't like is nearby residential centers.
Right. Well, then it's, that's why I put, took the, uh, into industrial areas. And right now we have the maximum buffer was thirty feet.
Right.
But you could have buffers other than distance. And I didn't think that was a good thing for noise. Cause at least the thirty feet key reduces the noise. That, I just picked one.
I get it. No, I get. Thirty feet is that.
The max we have right now.
Yeah.
If we want to change it for data center. I don't care, but I just like to have something.
This might be interesting to see what Horstley went and's come up with so far, since they've done all our zoning regulations to just what do they have was it would. And I think that this is very interesting to think about that and about that size.
But everybody on the commission is good with saying data centers would be permitted if we limit the size. I'm not good with that.
No.
Nope.
But how do you can, what are you?
In something the size of a truck and have it be horrible. Right. So my point is.
You've got other criteria than size.
You do, but I don't, I don't think, for instance, let's look at the sustainability, you know, five elements there, right? How do we rate those up within a zoning regulation that they must be also applicable in five thousand square feet? Or are we just doing this and we're limiting that developer would say, I get what you did, but I'm never going to put a data center.
That may be true.
Right.
That may be true.
Right.
Then we'll never see any.
Yeah.
Or things could change. The technology could be different in ten years.
It will be, right, right. We weren't talking about crypto five years ago, and I doubt we're going to be talking about.
Oh, but I, I think.
I'm sure you've done that, right. I gotta think it out a little bit.
Yeah, I know. I want to think this out too.
I think we should have something on the books that keep us out of trouble.
That's, but has anyone said what we've, but we're about to say puts us in trouble? I mean, what, have we done anything that we have prejudice because we said we don't?
Yeah, because we came close to two large data centers coming.
I understand that, right? And what did we, what didn't we like about those? One, noise. Two, size. Three, power, four, water. Water, you know, all of your. Five runoff, all the things that we don't want. And, and so, you know, let's take all of those bad things and just make sure that we don't.
That's what I tried to address.
Yeah, and great, you know, I think you gotta start someplace. Start putting down to your concerns and eliminate them.
That's what I tried to do with this. Not, not expecting that we'll see any or not.
Yeah.
Because an accessory one could, you could sneak that in.
Yeah, yeah. And how you said, no, you could have a small one and have it horrible, but I don't think so.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, I think over here is you absolutely could.
Well, I mean, a trailer, if, if a trailer. If a trailer follows the criteria and doesn't have the noise.
Then it'd be fine.
That would be a. Have the runoff and doesn't have.
You gotta be careful about. Well, it's stormwater is what I.
That's correct.
But, but that's, that's a, that's a consideration for any kind of industrial. You don't want to say that only data centers can.
It's things that are unique to a data.
Right, that's what I mean, exactly.
Deb caution this one. I got it.
You can build a shed, any, as long as you can build a shed. We don't, we're talking about what are we putting into it, which is different.
Right. And you want to make sure that your standards here really and truly are unique to data centers and not just all industrial uses.
Oh, they should be the same.
Right.
And that's what I, that's why I tried to keep them similar and prevent having. Too, too many data centers together in a small volume to really become big.
How would that fifteen hundred foot distance be with what you just said? There was a fifteen hundred.
No, I was trying to say you can't have data centers closer than fifteen hundred foot on the property.
I mean, we don't do that with other industrial uses, right? I don't say.
No, but I want to do that because otherwise you, you could have somebody coming in and buy small lots.
No, yeah, no.
Little mini data centers in each lot and you'd have a big man, big data center.
Yeah.
And that's what we don't want.
We may have them already.
That's why I put that.
I don't know. You, you read this? Is that, is that realistic? I mean, I agree with you and I would like to.
It's just a number I picked.
Yeah, I mean, it's realistic.
I mean, that's something that we are, we're, we could.
I think, I think so. I mean, certainly something would run by the town.
Yeah.
Attorney, you know.
Seems like it's.
Yeah, but, but certainly these other things, you know, the noise sec, um, and then. You can certainly increase the buffer, you know, adjacent to residential uses for these particular, that's, that's fine.
Do, have we confirmed that the town has the data center?
What's your definition of data? I mean, we certainly don't have the large standalone ones that were contemplated.
Do we have a building that has a bunch of servers?
Yes.
Sure.
Where?
Downtown Hall.
Yeah, it's down. And we don't use much cloud in Boston. Okay. If, if at all.
Right.
It's a data center. It's an accessory data center. Yeah, but it's inside the building. No one knows it's there. I know that there's a backup generator out back.
Right. And, and you know, there's, you know, extra space downstairs, so maybe another one could be brought in.
Or they could put them into the old Fitz junior.
Sure, sure. Know that is they have to get a building permit.
Yeah, so something has to say, no problem with that, you know? Something has to say, okay, what's the next jump up? A standalone building. That would be dedicated for, say, five or six businesses that would all share maybe common resource or something. You know, and.
We were talking about that once.
Yeah, and then, you know, if they share a common resource and one is divisioned to the, the bank that's down in front of Big Y. You know, and they said, okay, we're going to make that a data center. It'd be a perfect location, you know, for the.
Big Y, that'd be terrible location for a data center because we want some viable public use commercial in that location.
Oh, well, I'm just saying that from a standpoint of being a bunch of businesses, you know, that would all share, you know, a common resource. And they say, you know, just say that they were heavy data users or something. And, um, well, it's abandoned now, right? That, that bank is.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and then jump up to one scale further, you know, where you got something like an Amazon or somebody that wants to come in and say, okay. I want to put in a pretty heavy duty one, you know, that's where maybe we teeter and say that's not, Groton is not the place for it. You know, so. I always thought it would be a tiered thing, you know, certain things we don't really care about, minimum amount of rules. Medium sized, okay, if we're going to put rules, keep it apart from everybody and then big ones cannot do.
That's what, I think that's what I'm really trying to do.
And then I, I think there's.
I just had to say that.
Yeah, and then a distinction, I think, between resid, uh, where they're close to residential, IM versus IG. You know, what, what we really think can go in these places.
Yeah.
I wonder, we've given the sensitivity to these that we're now picking up on, if some of those couldn't be just blanket for noise sake. And setback from residential because we ended up with residential too close to our industrial areas happened in time. Uh, maybe this doesn't even have to be specific, that particular thing doesn't need to be specific, the data centers. We can just say, hey, from here on out. If you're closer than X, then you've got need to be to a residential, then you need to meet these, uh, sound criteria.
Yeah.
Probably. Yeah, that would probably make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Always doing.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got so many cool things you can do with acoustics now.
So that is a matter for what you've presented us with, it's picking, picking numbers. When I saw this, I thought, why did they show us what the multiplication table?
And I thought it was a good thing to see.
Well, it was helpful. I thought it was funny. I was looking.
I do understand how big a thousand feet.
Yeah, well.
And that's why I was trying to.
I think the thing is like with that, then what?
But this is.
Like in an I, IM, you want to go down to, uh, Leonard Drive and look at those buildings.
Yeah.
And see what we have down there because that's what I sort of think of.
But I would think maybe those are too big. Maybe those are too big for a data center.
Considering that what you could pack into a building that big.
But that's why would it, and what would be too big about it? Could be too noisy.
No, that.
Leonard Drive.
No, that's be, no, I was saying that size of a.
It might reach the tipping point. I don't know.
I don't know.
I'm just, I, you know, and there's various buildings down there, you know?
Yeah.
It's just what I think of, uh, IM, but that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, but.
You know?
Yeah, but I.
It's never charged.
But I was just thinking that if you can come up with the size, because that's how we control land use.
Yeah. To me makes the most sense. Might not be like an absolute way to do it here, but that's.
Use the size.
Cause we don't really have any other tools.
Because you can control the size.
Yeah.
And then you can prohibit certain other things or adjacent units. That's what I was trying to do with this. If these are the types of things that we should be controlling. Maybe I thought it might make sense and just pick a size. That's why I put in this stupid table.
No, no, it, it, uh.
And that it maybe leads you, like to me, ten thousand square feet is too excess. Is having a building fifty by two hundred. Sounds to me too big. It's a lot of service.
Yeah, that is.
I mean, we're in a twelve hundred square foot room.
This is probably a good size.
This is, is what you're looking at. Well.
Yes.
But would two of these be terrible? I don't think.
No, probably not.
So maybe your charge should have been, here's how many meeting room twos it is.
Oh, no, that's why, no, that's why I, I thought we should determine the size. And that's why I put the table in to give us an idea. Maybe.
You're conditioning us, as we call it.
I was trying to build a dartboard, so. So, yeah.
Next time, next time, darts.
So I, I think that. I think it's more of an, uh, I think it's an overlay. I don't like it across. I know it is.
Spot zone.
Yeah, we still need some.
Yeah, I don't like.
No, I get it.
It's getting late.
Okay.
So do we think these are this type of approach?
Let me think about. Now that I know.
Reset, have that resend.
Yep. So, right. So we'll get Kevin's information to you too, since you didn't get it. Um, all of this stuff will be attached to the workshop agenda for next Monday.
But maybe this gives us some good. You're gonna send. Yeah, and maybe this will give us some good. But what we really want to see in the.
Sounds good.
Not saying that everything's shift and smooth, it's just the type.
It's the types of.
So at the workshop, we're going to put data centers first because we need to get through, we need to get through this. Or else we need to apply to extend the moratorium.
That's why we need.
We do, we need to get through.
Need to shortcut.
So we'll, oh, that's why you booked it so soon. I was wondering why.
Yeah.
Like December again, and you wanted.
We have a year moratorium.
It goes to July. So, yeah, it's a, it's a year, but.
Yeah, back that up.
Right, and then, right. Right, and then, right, so we'll have to apply to extend that moratorium, you know, by late February. If, if you guys haven't gotten to a point where you're ready to submit an application.
This is a, an approach that's realistic, and all we gotta do is put values in. Then it shouldn't take too long.
Okay, yeah, oh, sure, it's up to you guys.
That's what I was thinking and trying to shortcut that, cause it seems like we're on a different planet than Horsey Woods.
Okay.
You're agreeing with us too much, you get me now.
We're in the same solace as. Different planets. All right, let's move on. And we have new business, we've got new applications.
Yep, couple of new subdivisions, so we'll schedule hearings for those. No, they're each two lots.
Referrals, we have one.
Well, the town of Stony.
Oh, wait, we did the town of Stony.
Right.
It's a. Misreading, I think. For the rabbits.
Right, exactly, to allow.
Have any concern growing rabbits and snowing. So. For very animals. I guess you can have sheep. I wonder why they did pick rabbits.
I, I don't know. I don't know.
They seem to grow themselves just.
I like to get rid of them, but.
Happily, the coyote population in my backyard is taking care of the rabbit population.
Yeah, okay, moving on then. Reported chair. Still, are we still looking for a, a session for celebrate the end of the year? We could do it after our workshop, if that makes sense. I looked at, I was thinking. You know, par four might be a place we could go to. According to the website, they're open to nine o'clock at night.
That's pretty late.
Then Daniel Packer in so. There's parking.
Could we fit in there, though? I mean, it's only downstairs.
They have upstairs, so you get private rooms. Too expensive. Or you go sneakers.
I was thinking also sneakers.
Yes, sneakers.
I go sneakers.
Seems like, I wanted to go there, it was closed.
Oh, I don't know, but I just thought, you know, par four might be good.
I think I would vote par four.
Par four.
If it's, if it's an option, you know.
Well, it looks like it would be, right?
Par four seems like probably the most suitable place for, just because for you.
That's way over there.
That's not even in our zoning. Tax money going.
Yeah, let's go to the.
Have you ever been in there?
I have, I will say, no, I'm not.
Yeah. Very noisy.
Yeah.
It's, it's in a cement block.
You clean it with a fire hose.
Oh, I think so. Yeah.
Luckily, they don't have too many customers, so.
Okay, so par four, we'll call and make sure that there's, you know. That just to let them know that coming and.
Yeah.
They got a couple of different areas in there.
They serve food there till nine, according to the website. So if that's all, that might make sense, just go down there after. Horsey Wood, keep it on the same line. All right. I didn't have anything. We put, does it, reported commission, does anyone have?
I might just bring you up to, up today a little bit on the town owned property reuse committee, which has been meeting and is turning ahead to come up with. Understand it's come up with a procedure for dealing with town owned property. And part of that is already made the, the name slightly obsolete, because it also addresses things that the town doesn't necessarily own, but still has to have say over. And part of that's coming down to coming up with a standing committee that can be added on to ad hoc. To review all town owned property that wants to be evaluated for resale. Which would be someone from this committee and, and from anybody else, any other, the committees that are commissions. That would have interest to always vet things. The idea is just to shortstop something like in oral school. To have this committee of committee men, first take a look at it and render some opinions. Wouldn't be binding, but it would at least give the heads up, and it'll be part of the procedure prior to going ahead and putting out an RFP.
And how that's formed, you know?
That committee is not formed, this, we're still in a committee to put together a procedure, and they're view imagining that to be permanent or.
Yes, permanent.
A permanent.
And then just meeting as, as necessary. As, as necessary, or actually, there, there's discussion about as necessary. But at a minimum, quarterly or so, because there's any number of properties that could be viable. For evaluating as something we would want to sell. So nobody's put an offer on it, nobody's looking at it, but we have actually this tremendous list of odd properties that's. This committee could vet ahead of time and say, hey, this is, these are good things to be looking at in the future. So, the right, like, the way could get to the committee would be either an outside developer, wanting to be interested. Or the town council saying, hey, we're interested, or in this case, the committee would come up with something, hey, we have nothing better to do, so we can open these other properties. Would always circle through the town council to come down to the committee, but. It would be permanent, add to ad hoc, depending on neighbors or people, other situation. Uh, uh, other groups that would have interest, that would always have housing, always have planning and zoning, always have economic development. Always have conservation. As kind of a baseline. Are you looking for volunteers? Yeah, yeah, I get it. Yeah, no. No, I think that's important.
Starting something that.
And the thing is, with something like that, to me, it seems like part of them, I mean, you, it's. Get everybody on board early with anything, and you'll have much better results in the end, it's these things that. You know, that, that's been proven time and again, that that's what works, is communication and, and getting buy in. As early as possible, right? In this case, rather than going one step at a time to each commission.
Yeah.
And having a short stop, you know, months down the way with us saying, hey, at the end, hey, we never liked this, and let's stop.
Yeah.
This way, we'll have some opinion up early.
Motion to adjourn?
Well, we got the other. Or to staff, nothing, and we have the app. Application and ASP report. I thought tonight would be a.